Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This is a regular meeting for November the 8th. First of all, could we have the legal opening statement, Eric? I believe the boardroom is muted.
I'm sorry, that's my job. Apologize.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, one more time, Mr. Bronco.
All right. This is a regular meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61-826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfort, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you're speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rankin, could you call roll, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Cheatham?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hackbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman?
Here.
Mr. O'Meara?
Here.
And Mr. Powell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am, no public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two meetings to approve, the September 7th and the September 13th meeting. Unless there is objection, I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes for both of those meetings.
So move?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hackbert and Dr. Milkman, do we have any edits, corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve minutes for September 7th and September 13th, 2023, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have approval of the minutes. I'm going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit today. I'd like to take the administrative items first so that we can then give our undivided attention to the actuarial committee report, which is the primary reason for this meeting in November. First of all, I'd like to-
I think that you'd need to call for a motion to amend the agenda for that also, according to Roberts.
I have to amend the agenda to change the order?
Yes.
Okay. Can I-
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor, I'm gonna move item number seven and eight up ahead of item number six, please. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. With that, what I'd like to do is to hand the mic over to Mr. Powell and Ms. Pettijohn to provide the joint retiree health plan report, please.
Okay, thank you very much. We've had the meeting on October 23rd. There's really no, that I can recall anything that needs to have action of the board. Instead of me trying to recap what everybody else says, I'm going to let Ms. Pettijohn to run with it and kind of hear it from the horses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. I hope you all can hear me. But what I wanted to point out was that in the formulary changes, that there's really not a large percentage of change. So that is actually a good picture based on last year's. It's showing the percentage, the percentage is the change between last year and this year. So those people will get notifications November and December if they're impacted in these ways. And that's how Humana presented the information to us. And I will let you know that we did do a brief, we're going to get a better update of how the pilot that they're doing on the pharmacogenomics, and that is a genetic testing component that allows people to be tested to see if certain drugs may provide them a benefit versus not based on their genetics. And Medicare does cover a number of these, but they cover it more for a specific test, not as a screening, like a specific genetic type information. And the Humana did also go over what Humana's Medicare therapy medication program, which is a program that is mandated by Medicare, and it's offered to our retirees. And I'm not going to read all of the description of what it requires for you to be in there, although people are usually very sick managing multiple conditions during this. But if you look at that last two sentences, we had a 77.2% participation in 2023 so far. And, no, wait a minute, we had that, yeah, in 2022 and 23. It's already at 67.9%. So it's not run out yet. But compared to our peer groups, I feel like we're doing very well at the 71.4% and the 69.4%. So I wanted to point that out to you. Most of it was informational. We gave a brief snapshot. I think it was on the 23rd, so you know, we open enrollment just started on the 1st. So we'll let you know that most of the stats were pretty much stable as regards to last year. We did have 1,000 more phone calls responded to. Emails were about the same, but they were, you know, higher than the 89. We will give a complete report of open enrollment in February when the committee meets again. But I will tell you, we did go out more. The Kentucky Employees Health Plan, which covers the non-Medicare eligible retirees, went out to at least five locations across Kentucky this time, and we did participate in those. And then Humana again provided outreach, but again, they did it in four and five different locations. And also, we joined on that, and both groups did continue the webinar. So I feel like the retirees are having multiple opportunities to engage and learn about this benefit. And I feel like that's part of what's come out of our outreach and, you know, some of the ways, I hate to say that COVID helped us with this, but I feel like COVID, you know, caused all of us to engage this way. And retirees, the visitors, are about the same. There's not a large change, and we are still seeing them virtually and for scheduled appointments. Some walk-ins we do see too. So I feel like it's going well, it's still going well. And the 30th of November is when the Medicare open enrollments is over. So then we'll be working on getting everybody cards that needs cards and access to cares that need to be in the right plan. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Powell, unless there's questions.
Yeah.
The kind of, this was, it's also passive enrollment this time around, again. And the negotiations still continue between Humana and Baptist Health Group. I want to make sure I always get that right because there's the hospital and then there's the medical groups. And so it's a, the medical groups, hospital is still in network. So we're keeping an eye on that and still hoping for a resolution in the near future. And because of the plan that we do have, even though the medical group is out, Baptist Health Medical Group is out of network, it, because this plan that Humana provides is, the out-of-pocket costs are the same. I just really just want to keep driving that point home to everybody.
We have not had any access to care requests about that. We haven't run into any retirees reporting. They can't see their provider. If they do, we get Humana to work with them and talk to the provider. So I will say, I really haven't experienced those complaints. I did go to, in person, to some retiree meetings as well as those open enrollment seminars in Louisville. And in Somerset, we went, and I believe we also went to, we're going to Corbin in a couple of weeks. And we went to, down here at Frankfort, the VFW, yeah. So we've seen quite a number of retirees, more than we did last year with the open enrollment outreach.
And Connie and her staff reached out to a number of the retiree groups with the letter that they could provide to their provider also. So kudos to Connie and the retiree health staff for making all this extra effort to put, help aid our membership and their anxiety over these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
And that will conclude the retiree health report.
I just want to pass on one compliment from the retiree groups I met. They said to tell the board they appreciate their efforts in lowering the premium for the Medicare Advantage plans. That's greatly appreciated. And they said to let you all know that, so I'm letting you know.
Well, thanks. It's always good to get good feedback.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Powell?
No, that concludes it.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I'd like to go to the bylaw amendments. Ms. Rankin, if you could show that proposed recurring meeting schedule, which has the table by month and by committee for the meetings. We needed to make one minor change, and it is in the board of trustees meeting. The Department of Finance needs the end-of-year financial reports by December the 6th. So I'm suggesting that we make a minor change to move our December board meeting from the, I think I had it for the second Monday. We need to move that to the first Monday of December. And if the trustees are okay with that minor change, I'd like to go ahead and give second reading to these bylaw revisions. Is there any objection to going ahead and finishing up these bylaws?
There are, Betty, there are a couple things I missed out on part of that discussion at the last meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me. I think, Betty, you probably got an email from Michael Ford the other day with regard to an issue in the bylaws with regard to, and this is not something that started in there, but with regard to trustees participating or listening in to meetings that they're not a committee member of, that the way it's currently worded would run as a foul of open meetings-
Right.
-issues. And I believe it's on page, on section 2.1. I should have written down the page number, I guess. The last sentence in that first paragraph says, "Any trustee may attend any meeting of any committee of which he or she is not a committee member, but shall not have a vote." My understanding is, is just if two or three of us pop into one of these things, it violates the open meetings regulations with regard to having a quorum of the full board. Michael suggested that sentence be removed and replaced with a statement saying, "Any trustee who wishes to observe a meeting or a committee of which he or she is not a member shall do so by watching the live broadcast," meaning basically watching on Facebook wherever that's being put out. I would like to make a motion to make that change in our bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fulkerson. With that change, I think that one is a little more significant than that date change. I would prefer to put this off for second reading until December. So we would need to give it another first reading today, and we can give it a second reading in December. If that's okay with the rest of the trustees.
I think we have to have a second reading for that, for that change anyway, if my understanding is correct. Which leads me into trying to find those.
Oh, you've got another one?
Yeah, this is the part that I missed out on the conversation. I think I had to step away at the last board meeting. On page 12 of the bylaws, page 156 of Board Books. We've got a section in there, if I understand it correctly, where we're creating a legislative committee?
Yes.
You know, I've, I'm a little bit concerned about that, just to be perfectly honest, Betty. Given our issues, legislature and everything else. I think that section needs, needs some discussion. I prefer to see that part either as have a discussion on it or table for a discussion, whatever. But I just have some concerns about that. I think it opens us up to some open meetings issues with regard to legislative action that doesn't need to be out there. And it should be in draft form or in conversation with legislators or whoever.
Yeah, this was a section, we used, we used to have a section called the ad hoc committee, and I changed it to a regular committee.
Yeah, and if my understanding is correct, I think we've got a, what is it, an ad hoc legislative committee? Is that correct?
Well, I was converting it to a standing committee.
Yeah. So I'd like to hear some pros and cons with regard to the issue of whether that creates a problem with putting some discussions out there that's going, that may be ongoing with legislators that isn't for public consumption at that point in time.
My understanding is, it's not an ad hoc committee, it's a work group.
Okay.
And, and so that, and since it's not a committee, they could discuss some of the issues that is related. It's not open for, it's not an open meeting necessarily. And that way, the information that they can come and come, or they can have access to is for those proposed, or not even proposed bills, it's the bills that are being thought about in the very early stages. And that is, that we don't know if they're even going to propose, they just want to look at possibilities. And if we move it to even an ad hoc or a full committee, then that would be subject to open records, open meetings. And as such, it would not, they would not have access to the documents until they are published.
Being proposed, yeah.
Yes, it reaches the BR levels.
So the current status is a working group, which doesn't have the status of a ad hoc committee, is that my understanding?
What, whatever's going on now, I think, fine. I just have a concern that we may run afoul of our relationships with some legislature could start putting things out there for public consumption that are being, just being talked about and discussed. That's where my concern is. So I, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see some more discussion about that, whether that's the case, not the case, and table that portion.
Betty, can I?
What I'd like to do then is to table the discussion of the bylaws and come back to have a more in-depth discussion in March.
Well, I don't disagree, Betty. I'd like to, Eric, if our council can kind of give us some guidance with regard to these open meetings issues that we do, you know, we get that. I just have a real concern about that.
Well, I understand the concern about putting legislative language out there before they've actually gotten it to a BR status. What has happened in the past is that staff has worked directly with legislators and trustees are not involved in the conversation at all.
I don't want to, I don't want to discount our involvement, but that's not at all. I just want to make sure that we keep as good a relationship with legislators as possible, number one. But at the same time, we still have some oversight as to what's going on. And it sounds like a work group may be the best way to do it.
Dr. Milkman's trying to get a chance to talk there.
I'm sorry, you're right. Dr. Go ahead, Dr. Milkman.
Well, if we postpone it to March, there's a legislative session that starts before then. So maybe we should consider it in our December meeting.
Well, we've already covered a lot of the proposed legislation that's going to come up in this particular session. So I don't think March is, is too late to figure out how we're going to address it.
And we can leave the work group in place.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Betty, can I offer a comment?
Let me hear from Bill O'Meara first.
Bill, you're muted.
I do think we need some council advice, work group, ad hoc committee, standing committee, and the nuances, if any, there are there. This conversation came up with the executive search group. And we have public meetings, even though it may have been called a work group or an ad hoc committee. So I do think it's a legitimate point, and, and we need to have that fleshed out so we understand the options and what they mean.
That's a good point, Mr. O'Meara. We currently have a situation where we have two work groups that meet without open meetings and one work group that's been required to meet in open sessions. So we have a little bit inconsistent guidance. So I think Eric and Joe need some time to research this and, and give us a legal recommendation on how we ought to structure it. Mr. Eager, you wanted to add something?
Yes, please. If you recall, the letter from PPOB co-chairs who said, "We don't want to be in a position of trying to resolve differences between the C and the K board. Those differences should be resolved before they come to us." And I think H1A- And I think H one A says the committee shall review pension legislation proposed in the General Assembly that affects CERS. I think somehow the language has to be, I understand that, but but I think I think the recommendation has to come in with a some coordination with the. KRS or KPBA board. Uh, or else we're going to be right back and that was a pretty harsh letter we got from the two co-chairs. So essentially, it was work it out before you bring it to us. And I think A, H one A says that the C board can go ahead and make their own recommendation to the legislature.
It says May.
We assume that's not going to have an impact on the legislative session. It seems like. A basically tabling this until March would be logical, so we can have more input from our legal staff.
Yeah.
Discuss relationship of K and C regarding legislative changes. So I would propose we just table this until March. I would make that a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. With that, um, since we have a motion to table, there's no discussion. All those in favor of tabling the bylaws until March, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that takes care of the bylaw section. Uh, the next item is the CEO contract. And Ms. Rankin, if you could go to page one sixty two. Um, we've gotten some concerns that. Ed's clause for termination without clause has a. Three-month payout where several other contracts have been given a six-month. So we have three options here. We can A, leave it as it is. B, we can just go ahead and change the three months to six months, which is the only difference between this contract and other contracts. Or three, we could refer it to the Personnel Committee for their reconsideration of how we originally wrote the the contract. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for which one you folks would like to do.
I'll make a motion that we amend the contract for that reflects the similarity with the others to six months. We're just doing an identical.
May I speak again?
Sure.
Michael, can you weigh in on this? Because I'm not sure who's got six months and just to make sure.
Everybody has six months except Ed.
Uh, I have three months.
You have a one-year contract.
I I understand that, but.
That is, that is.
I just, just to make sure that if you'd weigh in, I think he's got, he may say exactly right, but just in case.
Yes, that is, that is accurate.
Okay.
All all other two-year contracts currently in effect have six months.
Okay, sorry for the interruption.
And with the, if I can clarify my motion, it's just for the six months. The length of the contract remains the current expiration date.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. Uh, with any other discussion? I think that's the easiest way to take care of it. All those in favor of making the change from a three-month payout to a six-month payout and leaving the contract term the same, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, that takes care of our administrative items. Uh, now we can go back. I'm sorry.
Ms. Pendergrass, it's Michael Board. I apologize. Um, I was looking for my hand to raise and I couldn't find it. I I just wanted to, I know the bylaw, uh, bylaws got tabled for discussion. Those, the bylaw changes is what included the calendar, the meeting calendar for twenty twenty four. And so that will need to be figured out in a different.
We'll have special meetings until we get the bylaws approved.
Okay, I just, that was just an issue that I wanted to 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 bring up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question on that, please? Can can we just as a board adopt next year's meeting calendar? That way we wouldn't have special meetings until some unknown date into the future.
We could do that, yep. If, Sherry, if you go back to that proposed recurring meeting schedule. Table. We could adopt this table for the year twenty twenty four.
With with the December amendment that you spoke of earlier as first Monday.
Right.
I make a motion that we adopt this calendar for twenty twenty four with the. Amendment of the December board meeting, the first Monday.
I'll have a second.
Ms. Pendergrass, I'm sorry I didn't get in before Mr. O'Meara made his motion. This is Erin Sarat. I think we had discussed on your September meeting that that was going to be moved because there were issues that needed to be. Decided for the health insurance. And it it says that it's the third Wednesday of September, which is a little late for our publications.
No, the healthcare committee meets on the first Tuesday. And the Board of Trustees meets on the third Wednesday.
Right, but the board has to ratify the decisions of the healthcare committee.
Okay.
And we typically, we need those decisions before the fifteenth of the.
Okay. Um, well, I tell you what, um, can we table this motion and we'll bring it back in December when I get enough information to create a calendar?
Sounds good.
Could I have a motion to table?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Milkman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll talk about the calendar in December. And that's what I thought would be the easy part of the agenda. So, okay, now, um, I'd like to direct our attention to the actuarial evaluation. And I'll hand the mic off to the Mr. Foster.
Well, Betty, I thought the actuarial committee was the most complicated part and maybe the easiest. After hearing the discussions so far today, but in any event, we'll delve into the actuarial committee report. Uh, the issues before the committee are the two thousand twenty-three actuarial evaluation. And the opportunity, if appropriate, to recommend a annuity conversion or a service purchase rate. I've learned recently there's been an audit adjustment that may affect that, so I'd like to hand this off to Daddy White now and. Let him bring us up to date on the evaluation and then we can decide where we go from there.
Very, thank you, Mr. Foster. Again, this is Danny White with Gabriel Roder Smith. With me is Janie Shaw. The information you're gonna, we're gonna cover today. Uh, remains the same as what the actuarial committee saw last week. And since that time, we have learned about a, um, an adjustment needed to the financial statements for CERS. Uh, if I may, I'll, since we learned it from Mr. Lamb, I thought it'd be best to hear it directly from him about that adjustment. And as he does, keep in mind, these are still draft reports. The, uh, so, you know, we, as as we work with many systems from time to time. The we see this type of occurrence happen. The final reports are going to be presumably adopted the next CERS board meeting on December second. So we're going to be planning on making these adjustments in our in our report to reflect the changes that. That Mr. Lamb's about to discuss. So from our standpoint, this is, this is not, not that significant. Although the timing of all the deadlines will be maybe the hardest, but with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lamb.
Thanks, Danny. Uh, Mr. Eager, do you have a question before I begin? You are on mute.
Uh, we're supposed to present the actuarial information at the. PPOB on the twentieth of this month. Just let me know if this impacts that, please.
Okay.
We'll do so. Um, late yesterday, we met with GRS because the day before that, we came across. An audit item that we felt, um, was appropriate to make an adjustment for. We learned that one of our employers in the C plan. Had not reported or paid their April, May and June contributions until August. And it was a large employer, and when we looked at the dollar amount, uh, it's approximately forty-two million dollars. And we felt like as that was contributions that belong in fiscal year twenty-three. That we should make the adjustment to reflect those contributions in the contribution reports and the. Changes fiduciary assets as well as the statement of net net assets. So we actually booked that entry this morning. We are in the process of reviewing the updated financial reports for June thirty with that adjustment made. Before we did that, we did speak with the APA or who is our external auditors this year, discussed the issue with them. From an audit standpoint, it would not have been material to them if we chose not to make that adjustment. And it would not have affected their opinion. But it it was in their non-audit opinion that we also consider making it to get the financials right. Um, as I discussed it with my management team, we also felt that it was appropriate to make this adjustment. Because for one of the C plans, it's pretty significant to the contribution amount. About six percent of their contributions were not recorded in the right period. And so if we get new financial statements to Danny and his team, which we plan to do this afternoon after we finish reviewing them. They think they need about a week to turn around new financial statements. Which is the limit of our deadline. Uh, we owe the APA a full hundred percent reviewed act for draft on the sixteenth. That's what is in our timeline and that gives them enough time for their executive team to review that act for in time for the audit committee meeting on the twenty-seventh. So in that timeline, with that adjustment, if things go as planned, we think that should meet all the deadlines, including. The PPOB deadline of the twentieth. Any questions?
I guess I will go ahead. Am I supposed to speak now? Uh, does that mean we can't approve whatever for today? Because it's not right?
I think Danny's going to tell you that it may have a slight impact to one of the rates and I'll let him elaborate on what that may be and. And and go from there.
Well, you know, we don't really approve this rate, excuse me, Mr. White, uh, we don't really approve this report. Uh, it's an objective analysis that, um, we don't vote it up or down. We accept the report. And what I would recommend to the board is that, uh, we can accept this draft. And we know that some amounts are going to change. So when we get to December, uh, we'll have the final numbers. And then we can use that final report to adopt the contribution rates, but we would not be approving anything today.
Thank you. I think Madam Chairman said it said it appropriately. You're accepting this as information today. You can go and review it. And then when you circle back with the next scheduled meeting on December second, that you will have an updated report. And for that one will be adoption, which will include the, uh, include the contribution rates set for FY twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, Mr. O'Meara, you have a question?
Yes, I did. I was writing too fast. Uh, Mike, can you, can you tell me the amount of the adjustment again?
I can tell you the exact amount if you'd like, forty-two million.
Forty-two million.
Six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, I I was writing and didn't catch the number, which was the important part. And you say that that impacted one fund by six percent?
Uh, that was my rough estimate. The C hazardous plan, uh, the amount. Applicable to them for contributions was twenty-three point eight million dollars.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this forward and also I I agree with your recommendation to make the change. And to accrue, uh, the revenues to the right period. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Yes, I have another question. Do we charge interest when they're late?
Yes, we've been charging interest on their late reporting and payments.
So this is included in the payment, the interest?
This adjustment is specific to their contributions. The interest, um, we did not make an adjustment for the interest that I'm aware of. They did. They are in the process of paying their interest invoices. But yeah, we did not include the interest amount in this particular adjustment.
Thank you.
All right, um, good discussion. With that, I will turn it over to Janie to walk through the first half of the information. And I will circle back on the on the last part.
Um, thank you, Danny, and I want to, uh, thank the board for the opportunity to come and discuss these results with you today, kind of like we just discussed. The numbers in in this presentation, they will change slightly, um, just like, um, we discussed. But the high-level discussion, um, what we're talking about and why things changed and how things changed, that's not going to change. Um, so what we're discussing today, um, that's still relevant, um, to the valuation. So today we're here to discuss the June thirty, twenty twenty-three actual evaluation. As you know, that sets the contribution rates, um, that go into effect July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, also known as the contribution rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, so I'm going to start by a discussion of what changed from this year's valuation to last year's valuation. Um, and then we're going to go and look at the contribution rates and the unfunded liability. Um, and then I'll turn it over to Danny and he'll take a deep dive into the changes we saw in the demographics. Uh, a deep dive into the funding results, and then also we'll look at some projections of the unfunded liability and the contribution requirements. So one of the major changes that we've seen, um, since the prior evaluation, as the board may remember, we are, um, here in May. And the board adopted new assumptions, um, that were first used in this June thirty, twenty twenty-three valuation. Some kind of headlines of the the assumptions that changed, um, was the investment return assumption. We increased the investment return assumption to six and a half for all the funds, both pension and insurance. The mortality assumption changed. Um, slightly, this was, um, the result was a slight, um, decrease in the life expectancy for our members. And then also we increased the rates of termination, um, for active members, essentially assuming, um, a lower probability of members reaching retirement. The overarching result of this was that it decreased our unfunded liability and it, um, also decreased our contribution rates due to these changes and assumptions. Moving on to the next slide here. Another major change that we saw, um, from this year to last year was we saw, um, increases in our active membership and our, um, membership payroll. You can see pretty significant increases in our membership payroll here. The non-hazardous fund, an eight percent increase, and our hazardous fund, a nine percent increase. And when we talk about increases in our membership payroll, um, keep in mind that our contributions are are collected based on our payroll. So when we, um, see increases in our membership payroll, those contributions, those required contributions, they're spread over more payroll, which means that drives our contribution rates down. Um, so also when we talk about changes in our membership payroll, that's really driven by two main factors. The first factor is a change in our active headcount, so more active members means more membership payroll. We did see small increases or we did see increases in our active membership across both the, um. Non-hazardous and the hazardous fund. And the second factor, um, that we'll talk about is, um, increases in the salary for your for your current active members. And I'm actually going to touch more on that in a couple of slides here. Um, one piece of legislation that passed in twenty twenty-three that I'll touch on is House Bill five oh six. This reinstated your partial lump sum, um, optional form of payment and also adjusted the minimum required separation period for return to work. This had a very minimal, um, impact on your non-hazardous fund. If we move on to our next slide. If we move on to our next slide, we're going to start with your investment experience to start on the asset side of things. We saw a ten percent return on your market value of assets across um all funds. Um, just on a very technical note here, we're actually comparing that ten percent um return to your six and a quarter investment return assumption. That was your old investment return assumption. Just getting in the weeds there, going forward, we're going to compare that to your six and a half percent investment return assumption. Um, but either way, um much higher than your assumed um return assumption there with that ten percent return. Put another way, um, our assets are about six hundred and one million more than we are expecting. But keep in mind, when we calculate your contribution rates, when we um calculate your unfunded liability, we're using what we call the actuarial value of assets. So we're smoothing those um investment gains and losses in over five years. So this year we recognized forty-four million in asset gains this year. Moving on to the liability side of things, um, looking at your retirement fund, um, we had a three hundred and twenty-eight million dollar loss on your retirement fund. Um, what that really means is that your liability was three hundred and twenty-eight million um higher than we were expecting. This is primarily due to the salary increases for your active members were greater than we assumed. So again, that was a big driver between that increase in your total covered payroll um that we talked about um previously. Um, so again, when we talk about um, you know, increases and salary increases for your active members, um, it does drive up your total cover, your total membership payroll, but it also means we're projecting higher benefits. So that does increase your liability as well. On the insurance side of things, we also saw a three hundred and thirty um one million dollar loss for your insurance funds. Um, that's mainly driven to um by your twenty twenty-four premium experience. Our pre-Medicare premiums were higher than we are expecting, which was partially offset by those Medicare premiums. So that was a lot of information. What ultimately does this mean for our actual funding results? Um, so looking at our contribution rates here, um, we'll start with columns two and four. Those are the current contribution rates that are currently in effect. Um, those went into effect July first. Um, so you can see that's twenty-three point three four percent of pay for your non-hazardous funds and forty-three point six nine percent of pay for your hazardous funds. Those were set by last year's valuation. Um, looking at this year's valuation, um, we can see a bear, that's uh columns three and five there. We can see pretty significant decreases in your contribution rate as a percentage of pay. Um, the two main drivers in those decreases is one, the assumption changes that we talked about, and then also um the increase in your membership payroll. Um, so those contribution rates there, the nineteen seventy-five and the thirty-eight nine five for the hazardous funds, those go into effect July first twenty twenty-four. So again, one of the main drivers there was that increase in the covered payroll. But if we look at these um required contributions on the next slide, um, as a dollar amount, you can see not a significant decreases there. Um, so for the non-hazardous fund, about fifty-seven million dollars a year on the hazardous fund, seven million dol- um, million dollars a year. Um, the next slide, um, what does this mean for our unfunded actual accrued liability? Um, you can see decreases across all funds there as well. Um, so right now, since we fully faced in those act- those uh full actuarially determined contribution rates, we do expect our unfunded liability for those pension funds to come down each year. We are systematically paying off that unfunded liability, um, which is what we want to see. Um, that for the unfunded liability for the pension funds did come down more than we are expecting this year. And again, the big driver behind that were the assumption changes from that experience study. So we did see a decrease for the non-hazardous fund, about eight hundred and forty million and the hazardous fund about two hundred million. Um, so you can see we still have pretty sizable unfunded liability for our pension funds there. We're still sitting at, you know, six point seven billion for non-hazardous and two point nine for hazardous. Um, but we are um systematically paying that off from year to year. Um, assuming no gains and losses into the future, um, which, you know, is what we want to see. And that does assume that, you know, we are paying those full actuarially determined contributions going forward. I'm going to pause right there. I think that's my last slide there. I'm going to pause right there. Um, kind of see if there's any question or comments before I turn it over to Danny. Seeing that, I'll turn it over to Danny.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Uh, we're going some demographics and projection information. Uh, what the slides here shows the the historical change in active membership counts. So we're counting noses on on the the members. So you can see it's remained real relatively flat over the ten-year period, but the part we've um, we're more encouraged about is actually see that uh the active membership increased the last two years uh for both the CRS non-haz and has to us. This is kind of a sign of a participating employer health, you know, that um uh that, you know, with contribution rates having increased since two thousand and seven seventeen, there's been a fiscal strain or or cost to the to the employers on that. And you can see now this is, you know, it's it's a complex situation and pension costs alone are aren't a driver of it, but it can certainly be a factor. Um, if we go to the next slide, we look at membership payroll and this is even more more starking because of the the increase over the last two years, each each of the last two years. Uh, this is something we're also seeing across the country. So it could be different employee types, whether it's teacher educators, state employees, public safety. Um, this is, this is a common, a common theme. And I think with state local government budgets being more flush now than what they've been in the past, generally speaking, um, this has contributed to as long as well as labor demands. Labor markets remain tight. So there's, there's increases going to uh to the workforce. Retired membership counts, these we can actually project out pretty high. Uh, we we can model out current retirees as they as checks are are stopped to them, as well as we know who current active members are in in our, um, as they transition from active workforce into retirement. Uh, we do expect these numbers to continue to trend up probably at least the next decade um for the seat, both seat plans. Same thing with benefit distributions. Uh, even though there's not a COLA feature to the plan, just the overall membership counts. Uh, this will go eventually go a little flatter, um, more so beginning when tier three members uh transition into retirement, just because they have a slightly less generous benefit than tier one and tier two members. But overall, for a high level, at least the next ten years, it'll keep trending up. All right. So we got the details. For those who are very detail oriented, um, this slide's for you. We got the top part gives the components of determining the actual determine rate. You have the the normal cost, which is the cost of providing benefits. And then you have the member rate, the member pays for part of the benefit, uh, five percent for non-haz and eight percent for the has. Um, for those tier two and tier three members, they also pay one percent uh contribution on the health insurance. So that's why you see that blended rate go from point five nine to point six three. Think of it as on a weighted on payroll, sixty-three percent of the people are tier two or tier three paying a one percent rate. Uh, the difference is your your employer normal cost, we reflect in admin expenses for the year. So that that is accounted for and reflected for paid for on an ongoing basis. And then the amortization cost is set by the pop, it's set by a combination of uh assumptions set by the board and the funding years which are set by statute. So that gives the actual determine rates that are that Jamie discussed um earlier. And then if we look on the balance sheet, the last four, last few items, you have the actual accrued liability, that's your liability component. You have the actual value of assets for funding purposes. We we calculate unfunded liability. Uh, think of that as your balance, your net balance sheet item and uh your funded ratio. So it's, you know, what, what I'm really happy to see over the last year was the the uh, the funded ratio and the go up, the the dollar amount of the unfunded go down. But keep in mind, at least half of this change was driven by uh the board's decision to to increase the assumed rate of return from six and a quarter to six, six and a half. So there was a little extra little extra nudge or push into it this year that uh I I still see head tailwinds and in your direction, but um, it won't be as accelerated as it was the last year. Most likely.
Would it, would it be accurate to say that the forty-two million will increase the actuarial valuation of a value of assets and decrease the unfunded uh liability?
It it will. So it's um, as what um as what Mr. Lamb noted is forty-two and middle in in total. So on the uh, on the balance sheet item, you'll see the liability remains unchanged. The actual value of assets will go up. Uh, I think Mr. Lamb noted is about twenty-three million for the hazardous system. So that gives you, you can look down there and you know, it's just going to be a little over three billion, but it's on a on a relative basis, it's still small. Uh, you know, what we might see is a small nudge or tick down in the amortization cost component that's um, looking at column seven, that's that twenty-seven oh two. That's possible. It may may adjust down a few basis points. Um, but I'm not expecting much more than that.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight where uh we know that we're going to have some changes.
Absolutely. All right. If we look forward looking in the into the projections, uh, we go the next slide. This is just documentation of the assumptions. And it's just noting that um we're not assuming any gains or losses in the future years. And um, giving that each year in the future, how are the projected uh contribution rates and unfunded going to play out? If we go the next slide, uh, if we're looking at the C non-haz system. So the top two is uh thing was your unfunded liability, your balance sheet. Uh, you're sitting just below seven billion, seven billion right now in the unfunded for the pension. How is that going to change over time? And it's going to take, oh, about eight years or so to get below six. And then it continues to build up momentum after that. And the reason is, is you look at the contribution rate, go to the con- contribution effort down the bottom, you have the black line. That's your contribution rate as a percent. And so that'll get somewhere between seventeen and a half, twenty, twenty percent. But you can see on the contribution dollars, because you have a payroll growth assumption that the good, the even though the rate doesn't change as much, the dollars are going to continue to go up. Uh, think of that as kind of backloading on the contributions and the contribution effort. And um, so that's where you get the more and more momentum of reducing the dollar amount of the unfunded liability uh further out. And then on the insurance side, you have a surplus that'll continue on in future years. A little less interesting there and but also I need to know too that uh, on the health insurance, it is also much more volatile than on the pension plan because with a pension plan, the benefits are known with great certainty. It takes legislative change. Uh, but on the health insurance side, the health insurance benefits um have a lot more complexity to them and are more susceptible to annual short-term changes, even beyond um uh CRS's control or KPPA's control. Okay, we got the hazardous system, similar story, just different scale. The uh, where you see on the insurance side where where you get a little bit of funding dip and then you get some contributions that come in there at the bottom quadrant, bottom right hand, that's just the notion of the funding policy uh that's in statute. And understand as these, as these play out, it will change in the future. Um, as you get new gains and losses that roll in. With that, I'll open up to any questions about the projection information. All right. Um, just closing slides. The main, the funding policy is improved. Understand that it was good news today. Um, you're in the mid fifty percent funded for the CRS. Um, non-haz plan and and a little bit better on the has, but uh the funding efforts just need to can, need to continue. Um, you know, if you look at systems across the country, you're still in the bottom twenty-fifth percentile. Um, and so while you may be better than others in in the state of Kentucky, it's um when you get outside, step out farther, it's um, it's kind of a different story. So maintain that that continued uh contribution effort is is important. And then again, that last uh, that last year or even two years, we've seen a membership change and um, and in control payroll has been a saw a positive sign. We can see where it hasn't been a positive sign on the K KRS non-haz. Um, and certainly we don't want to get in that same kind kind of condition. I don't, I don't think we will, but seeing positive trend in membership and payroll is is certainly a positive sign or indication of that. So that brings to close my my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. Uh, anyone have any questions? Hearing none, uh, I would accept a motion to uh accept this draft report with the understanding that um GRS is gonna rerun the valuation for the, to include the audit adjustment for June thirtieth.
So moved.
I'll make that motion emphasizing the word draft report, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster and Dr. Carver seconded that motion. Any other questions? With that, all those in favor of accepting this draft report with the understanding that there will be changes to incorporate the audit adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes care of that. Mr. Foster, if you'd like to explain the uh issues related to the annuity conversion and service purchase rate.
Well, we defer that will be not to have more information.
These are the rates for um converting tier three annuities or tier three account balances to annuities. Uh, and for determining the cost for members to purchase service agreements. This was the second topic uh in your committee meeting. The committee came up with a uh recommendation to accept a blended rate. Uh, Sherry, if you could go to that third schedule, the, yes, that one right there and enlarge that for us a little bit. Um, Mr. White, could you explain this schedule for us, please, sir?
Absolutely. It's a complicated schedule, a lot of numbers. Um, well, here's three sections to it. We'll go through the first section across the top, the tier three cash balance factors. Uh, we we have three hypothetical ages, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five. Somebody retires that age with a two hundred thousand dollar account balance, hypothetical cash balancing. And so, right, what type of annuity does that provide? And then you have across, we provided um coordination for different examples of different factors and interest rate. Um, the first one is five and a quarter and understand five in the quarter is is the current assumption that was uh that's being used by CRS. There's some history to it that uh back in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, when uh, when the K plans moved to the five is prior to KPPA. So prior to an independent CRS board meeting, but it was a KRS board at that time, uh, KRS reduced the assumed rate of return for the K non-haz plan, five and a quarter, same thing with state police. Uh, the CRS plans moved to six and a quarter when it came to cash to the conversion factors. The KRS board at that time adopted a five and a quarter assumption for all all plans. Uh, that's uh, so that's currently used. What's being discussed today is we have updated factors to use and what interest rate should should be used. So we modeled five and a quarter, the current, what if it was five, eight, seven, five? Uh, there's a six oh eight three, there's kind of a logic to that and a six and a half. So uh, the six and a half is kind of one bit in endpoint, that's the CRS return. The five and quarters still remains the, that's the current assumption and the current um uh, current assumption maintained by the K uh KRS board. The five eight seven five is in the middle. If you just split it fifty fifty, the six oh eight would be more on a headcount weighted basis. CRS plan is a little bigger than the other. Uh, the thing to note is the higher Uh the thing to note is, the higher. The higher the interest rate, you're assuming more investment risk or you're gonna, you're gonna be able to take that. That uh two hundred thousand and assume a higher re- forward-looking return than a five and a quarter. And then you can see what the impact is on the monthly benefit. So take somebody aged sixty, currently it'd be twelve hundred and ten dollars. And it would go up by about uh a hundred and fifty-four bucks if it went all the way to six and a half percent for that age sixty-year-old. Uh in terms of our recommendation discussion to the actual committee. Is uh we recommend that they coordinate with the KRS plan. Uh KRS board rather and set an identical assumption. If you think of it, the CRS plan, the KRS plans are has, non has, they're essentially identical. And so if you had a uh hypothetical set of twins that are identical and every. Every instance, one was in the K plan, the other earned benefits in the C exactly the same for their career. Uh you would think that they would get the exact same uh monthly benefit uh upon retirement. So that's kind of the. The principle or the premise for that. The interest rate assumption makes the biggest component for the ta- for the uh for the tier three cash balance plans because how their. Their benefit accrues uh during employment. It's a hypothetical balance rather than a a monthly benefit. If we go down to the table below, the next table, service purchase. If you wanna buy that additional year of service, uh how does that, what's what's the cost? And it actually, the cost works the other way that um. It's more expensive to buy a year's service uh with a lower interest rate than a higher one. You know, it just works, you're working through backwards from uh from a tier three person. Uh in the exchange of money and and the guaranteed benefit. The last one to note for completeness is when somebody, and it doesn't matter what tier, tier one, two, or three. There's also optional forms and of payment involved where they can select a uh. Uh instead of a life-only form of payment, they can go to a joint fifty or joint a hundred percent factor survivor. Have a rider on it, so spot, so I have survivor benefits. And since we're comparing two streams of annuities, um the interest rate component. Uh has less meaning or value in converting. A straight life annuity to one with a survivor option. What's gonna matter more important there is is uh. Differences in between the retiree age and beneficiary age. Uh but it's, so for decision-making purposes, you're really focusing on. Tier three members when they enter retirement and the cost of survey per service purchases. For those who wanna buy by additional years of service. So the top two tables. Again, uh was restated our recommendation is whatever's decided to. Um work with the KRS board and coming to a meaningful agreement on. One set of factors. I think there's, there's some administrative hurdles that have to be made too in terms of. Uh KPPA's ability to um administer benefits with two sets of factors. Different factors for seeing K, but I'll I'll defer to KPPA to to give uh detail on that.
Yes, Mr. Eager.
You're muted.
Mr. Eager, you're muted.
Betty, I just thought it would be helpful for Danny to explain that the annuity rate is locked in forever. As opposed to the pension rate, which you can change from year to year. So if interest rates drop way down. Um these people have gotten a a a very attractive payment. There's no way you can alter that. So I think Danny has said in the past, you might be a bit more conservative with the annuity rate than you would with the pension rate.
That is correct. So for each uh, so conversion factors are reviewed periodically, usually as a result of an experience study. Uh so in that regard, administratively, we're revisiting a decision that was made. Two thousand seventeen or eighteen, but Dave, Mr. Eager is correct in that. Um once a member during this time set factors are set. Once that, once that retirement event occurs and that tier three person purchases that. Or converts that lump sum balance or that hypothetical balance to to a benefit, that is, they are locked into that benefit. For their lifetime. There's no going back and forth from account balance to to um. Uh to a monthly benefit. The other thing to note is, and you know, in competitive, in 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 relative value. Uh if you go up to the top, there's, it's almost un, it it would be. Um I think it's fair to say that a, that a member could not take, while it's an option, they could take the two hundred thousand dollars. They could not take, be able to take the two hundred thousand dollars and replace. Uh uh or find a insurance provider, annuity provider. That would provide a benefit higher than what you see there at the five and a quarter percent uh number. While interest rates have come up, um they're they're gonna use more. They're gonna use more conservative assumptions because once that transaction occurs. That that's it. They they are on the hook for providing that benefit the rest of their lifetime, unlike on the. With the retirement plan, CRS, while you're also on the hook, if things don't quite work out as well as what's hoped. Uh you can collect, you you generate an unfunded liability, which you, you have the participating employers to backdrop. So the annuity providers can't be wrong. Uh CRS can be a little conservative to to uh to weigh and. And more likely than not, you're you're on the right side and still still be considerate. I've. You know, I'm gonna use the term equitable, but that's, that may be a policy decision.
Mr. O'Meara.
Yes, a couple of, Danny addressed one of the things and that is, what what is the market right now for an annuity? Um without that information, I'm not sure we're educated enough to to uh to look at this. Um but secondly, what is the timing? I mean, currently, uh in a previous. Policy set at five point two five, is this just a a five-year review? Uh or is there, is there a deadline approaching for us?
There is not a deadline. It is a periodic review. I would. I, based on work with other systems, I would say whatever decision, even if it's made now. Um it would take at least six months to get incorporated into administer after you load the tables, after you get administration. After you get appropriate testing and and look at everything. Um so in terms of timing or or urgency, I. You know, we're we're we're, there isn't one, as I think we were really talking about something that's a byproduct. Of decisions that were made by CRS and KRS as part of the experience study in May and in May and June.
And could we request for reference like what TIA-CREF is paying and those uh those type of um. Uh retirement benefits that that. That do this on a regular basis, turning things into an annuity?
Yeah, I think you can go out and give get quotes, find any uh credible annuity broker. With them understanding that we're, you know, full disclosure, what you're. What they're helping you with, they should. I do know there's one, there's a website out there called. Immediateannuity.com that will provide you exactly that on a daily basis. You have to put in a lot of information, uh much more detailed than. Uh it it will be more biased because it's, it can be, unlike a plan where. It's a general neutral factor, you know, there's no differentiation by health. Um or by gender, uh on the annuity market, they can. So be sure to ask for. Um gender distinct quotes to understand the difference. They'll even ask what part of state you're in.
Mr. Cheatham, can you add some color to this conversation?
Oh, yeah, I'm just sitting here looking at some some of those rates. Those rates have come up substantially over the last twelve, eighteen months. Number one, but uh, you know, they, there's a lot of factors goes goes into that. Beneficiary's age, if they're taking a a hundred percent survivor or fifty percent survivor. Now you gotta factor in who that survivor age difference is. There's a, there's a lot of. There's a lot of factors that go into it, but uh I can, I can tell you, the five and quarter. We're on the low end right now. Uh and as they, uh Danny indicated. Insurance industry doesn't have a fallback, whereas to some extent we do, so. I think, I think we certainly, due to for that number to come up, where that is, I. I think uh Phil's right. I think if you can get some idea of the marketplace is, of course, that marketplace changes. Along with interest rates and a lot of other issues, but. My, I I had a question with regard, you know, in the past. They, i- if that rate changes in the past. Does KPPA have a history of changing those, you know, with the change in the fiscal year or at some, you know? There's maybe just whenever it's able to implement them, what what's been the historical. Implementation timeline so that we've got some idea of what what timeline we've got to be able to. Work out an arrangement or some type of of deal with with cable.
If I remember correctly, this rate gets changed when we do an experience study. And in twenty eighteen, the five and a quarter rate was selected because that was the actuarial assumption for KRS. For KERS.
But as far as implemented with 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 new retirees, is it typically going to affect July the first or?
I can answer that.
That's my question.
I can answer that, Mr. Cheatham. Um we typically, we like to do it usually either January first or July first. It doesn't have to be, again, there's no requirements around that. We just think that those are good, um either at the beginning. Of a new fiscal year or a calendar year um is is best timing for the members. Um. We do, we would need, from the time we got the updated um factors, we would need at least. Six months to implement and test before putting those into effect. We also like to have them. In place a few months before they actually take effect so that members can see. Um what their retirement estimates would be in service purchases, um using the old factors and the new factors. For decision-making purposes. Um if, I mean, that's, that's assuming that we. Um use the same rate for uh all of the plans like we do today. Uh if something were to change and there were different rates used for CRS and KRS. And that would be a major overhaul of our current system. Our 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 system is not designed to handle that currently. So we would probably need at least eighteen months to um. Build the system to accommodate that test, fully test and implement that.
So what what I hear you saying, Erin, is. We wanted a change to go into effect in July. Then that that decision to to change the rate, whether it went to. Needs to take place no later than the first part of January.
No, I, I was just basically saying, those are usually the two times of years that we. We'd like to put them in effect, either a January first date or a July first date. Obviously, right now, we wouldn't be able to do anything for January first. As soon as we could do that would be July first. Um depending on when we receive the factors, the updated factors.
In in the past, you know, what effect does that have with regard to uh the decision of potential retirees to. To pull the trick, if they, if they knew a rate change was coming. How how is that typically handled, the fact of doing it? Do we give notice that upfront or do they just wake up one day and find out there's been a change?
We absolutely give notice. We um of course always put something out on the website, social media. We do things, not uh newsletter and notifications that way. Additionally, when we're having um factor changes, if someone has submitted. Um a Form six thousand to retire, say, for a November first date. Or December first date, then we would also, when we send out that final paperwork, we would also send them an estimate for January first. Showing them what those um payments would be if they waited until January um first to retire.
Danny, quick question. The the sheet you've got still up on on the screen that I'm looking at. You know, you ran four different scenarios, but the same rate was used. No matter whether you're talking about a fifty-five-year-old, a sixty-year-old or a sixty-five-year-old, is that? Uh you know, what I see on my side of the industry, that that rate changes. Uh depending on the age of the the person annuitized. How is that handled on on the pension side?
Well, on the um, yeah, what you may see it on on the um annuity provider side, you may. You you could see that, a different effective rate. I mean, they they even charge a different amount, how much. Uh that that effective rate could change, whether you're talking about two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand. Um you know, in in that regard, and the reason the the rate may change for some is think of it, there's. There's not one rate out there in the universe. It's a yield curve. Um you know, it's the curve of of the benefit payments and how they're gonna, how they're gonna cash flow match, but. First, for our purpose, administrative purposes, it's just one rate. It's one discount rate used. For all, for all single purpose. So you see five and a quarter. The five eight seven five, the the third one and six and a half. Uh the I I'll just, the third one I'm gonna refer to as headcount weighted rather than fifty fifty. And that same rate or that same, the same underlying assumptions. Are gonna go into the conversion factor for every single person regardless of age. The only difference would be there in the mo- you know, that's the underlying mortality table that's used. Uh for for the CRS and KRS system, which is the same, and it's a blended mortality table. It's a gender neutral bit uh that's weighted on the number of males or females. Uh but on the mortality table itself, it's just, it's it's a, it's a unisex mortality assumption. Uh for federal, federal IRS reasons, it's, you know, you're you're not biased based on gender.
Danny, in the actuarial committee, you talked a little bit about the risk associated with using, for instance. If we use a five and a quarter percent interest rate. And the system doesn't end up earning five and a quarter percent over the uh. Term that the uh member would be drawing this annuity. Um then the system takes a loss on on that annuity. Could you talk just a little bit about uh? Maybe the probabilities on um for the five and a quarter and the six and a half. I I understand they'd be a little bit different for the two in between, but um.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna have to defer back to. What we disclosed in our experience study report. I think we gave some probabilities. In that, in that May report about different assumptions. I think we're more focused on the six and the probability of exceeding six and a quarter or six and a half. Yeah, I just, I don't have that in front of me right, right at the moment.
Uh let me, let me ask that question in a little bit different version. Um let let's start with the five and a quarter per uh percent. Five and a quarter is the rate that uh KERS is using for. Five and a quarter is the rate that KERS is using for their non-hazardous and for the state police system. So there, if I understand it correctly, their asset allocation is driven by that five and a quarter assumption that they use for actuarial purposes. So the odds that their system could earn higher than five and a quarter over the long term would be rela, would be lower, correct?
That, that is correct, that they are invested different, even in the insurance plans. I think the, the way I, I think the way I remember it is, you have the insurance plans and you have the, the C non-haz and hazardous plans all at, say, a six and a half, and then, you know, you have the K plans and the state police on the, on the pension side have five and a quarter. They are invested slightly different, and because of that, they have different, you know, slightly different return expectations, probabilities that, that are lower than the, than, than what you're, you're looking at for the C, C retirement plans.
So for instance, if we used a rate of 5.875, KRS would have a harder time getting to that rate than CERS would have, because CERS is using a six and a half percent return to drive their asset allocation. And if C, if we used a six and a half percent, for instance, even though that's a higher rate, CERS asset allocation is kind of focused on that rate and the possibility of earning less than that would be somewhat lower.
Yeah.
So my concern is, is two things. If, if we ask KRS to come off the five and a quarter rate, they have a higher risk of not getting to that higher rate, where if we pick a rate less than six and a half, CERS has a much lower risk of not meeting that particular rate. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I don't know the probabilities, but just in principle, that's, that's an accurate statement.
Just based on funding strategy and how they're doing asset allocation. I mean, I, I, I look at this table, and while some of the provisions are very similar, I think our CERS members have a lower average salary, which means they're going to have a lower average cash balance in Tier 3. And the difference between five and a quarter and six and a half, I mean, if we just pick the 60 age range column, we're asking them to take a 12%, 12.7% decrease in benefits. If we went to the 5875, we'd be asking them to take a 6.3% decrease in benefits, and we'd be giving the KRS members a 6.3% increase in their benefits, with, at the same time, we increase the risk for KRS of being able to meet that 5875, so.
Well, you're, you're, you're close. I think, I think the difference is, CERS is currently at five and a quarter, so regardless of what happened, if you, if, because you're at five and a quarter right now for CERS, if you go to any type of increase at all in the, in the assumed rate of return on the factor, they're going to get a bigger benefit.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
They would get, except I'm going in reverse. If, if we pick five and a quarter, our CERS members would get a lower benefit, not than what they're getting now, but a lower benefit than what they could get. We measure that liability using six and a half, but we're asking members to take a lower rate and a lower benefit.
It's, yeah, it's, it's sort of like that. We actually build them into the rate, so whatever, whatever factors are developed, we, we load the factors in, are reflected in the valve about how they're, how they're converted to an annuity. So there, there is a bit of adjustment that goes, that goes into it. It's, so the factor, you know, said another way, right now in the CERS valve, it's based on conversion factors of five and a quarter. So if those conversion factors were ever increased, that's going to be reflected in the valve.
Gotcha.
And it'll be reflect, it'll be reflected in the next valuation.
Any other, go ahead, Mr. O'Meara.
Okay, I'm trying to get my head around this. So we're talking about trying to discuss two different options that a retiree has, or, or to, to become a retiree, and that is an option to do an annuity and what the rate is. Is that, that's one thing we're trying to set. Second thing we're trying to set is, if they have the option to purchase additional time, what is the discount rate used for them to purchase that time? Is that the second thing we're trying to decide?
The, the factors would be, typically the factors are used in both, so use the same assumptions in, in both. That's, that's the easiest for the system, but yes.
So both of these are current actives who have a choice to make, and we're telling them, this is how to calculate your choice. Choice on how much to, to purchase time, choice if you choose to take the annuity. Is that, okay. So we as, as fiduciaries have to look at the risk we're taking in order to give them this choice. And so we're taking more risk, the higher the guaranteed return is, to the system. Regardless, and, and if we have a 6.5% goal, that means we're taking on more risk with our investments than the 5.25% goal theoretically. We've taken on more risk in order to get more return. So should we take the same amount of risk for this annuity option, or should we be more conservative? Is that the question to the body right now?
I think that's a good way to describe it. Go ahead, Mr. Eager.
You're muted.
Mr. Eager, you are muted.
I'm so used to being unmuted in every meeting. But I, I think that one of the first choices, and these are interrelated, but one of the first choices is, do we, can we use a single rate, which is what, from an administrative standpoint, the staff would like to, and I think from a communications and benefits management, ideally, we could use this, if we could use the same rate, it'd be good. If that's the case, then what should the rate be? And this is, this discussion is going on right now, where I, I, I said the rate you lock in, in this annuity is a longer lock, so it's greater risk, you want to be potentially more conservative. The other side of the discussion is the K people are saying, we're going to go from five and a quarter to whatever they agree to, which, we'd have to wait to see what they're coming up with, but, but my sense is they're in a mood of striking a compromise as well. But I, you know, we are hoping from an administrative standpoint that we can come up with a single rate, and that's, and that's GRS's recommendation in fact, and there's an agreement that now, what, the, the proposal, I think, is 587 could be the rate for both, for both K and the C.
Well, and that was my concern, that if we go to a rate, a single rate such as 5875, we're asking the K plans to take more risks than they are taking now. And the C plan has an asset allocation geared toward earning six and a half. So we're telling C members, we're going to ask you to take a lower benefit so that the system has a lower risk during the time of your annuity. And at the same time, we'd be asking the K plan to take a higher risk and giving their members a higher benefit when we're asking C members to stay with the lower.
Yeah, right. Right now, I think the asset allocations for both K and C would suggest that there's about a 60% chance they'll make it. K's asset allocation is more conservative, but their number's lower, five and a quarter. Last time around, you all raised the rate from six and a quarter to six and a half. At the, at the C, at the K, there was also a discussion, and they decided to stay where they were, although there was discussion, maybe they'll go to five and a half, but, and they still could do that.
Well, I think we've got just a couple of issues. First off, from our perspective, yes, we're allocated in a way to achieve a six and a half percent average return. When we go to set an annuity factor, we're, we're locking in a long-term contract with a retiree. Our asset allocation over time is going to change depending on markets, depending on our financial situation. The K board, they've got to make their own decisions, but I would certainly think, long term in their case, as their funding levels go up, their asset allocation is going to change, and change in a manner that puts them in a better position to achieve a, a higher rate of return. Obviously, I can't speak for them, but, you know, I, I, at the same time, I think that 5.875 would be a good compromise for both, both entities going forward, particularly, and you don't want to have to go to your employers out there, but particularly when you've got a backup that either the C board or the K board doesn't meet their return targets, you know, then the, the contribution rate's going to go up a little bit to reflect that, make up that difference. So I, personally, I, I certainly want to stick with one rate, but I think it needs to come up from, from the five and a quarter, and I think 5.875 is a, is a good compromise.
Well, can I put a straw man out there for the board to, to consider? And that's that we, as, as a representative, some representative goes and talks to the K board about their opinion about a 5.875%. And then after discussions between the two boards, we could bring this back for consideration by those boards.
Ed, have you and John talked about the 5.875?
We've, we've talked about everything from 5.25 up to 6.50. There has not been a commitment from the K side surrounding any specific rate.
And John's ten, John's reaction to a 5875, did he have one?
His, his reaction, as, as I would characterize it, was that it makes sense as a compromise, but it was something that he didn't have authority to commit to, that his board would need to opine on it, and that has yet to occur. I believe they're, they're meeting in the next couple of weeks.
What, what is the time zone on this? Is this something we need to do within a certain period of time? Or is this, do we have a longer period of time to deliberate, consider, and get the reaction, okay, and consider this at a future meeting?
We, we don't have a specific deadline, but if you look to the notion of the soonest that, that this change, if there is a change, could be implemented, would be July 1st for members. If it takes us past January or February to come to an agreement on what a single rate might be, then that rate could not be effective until January 1st of the following year.
So we don't.
Twenty twenty-five.
Significant time problem here.
So you, you, we've, we've got at least a six-month lag.
Right.
I don't want to rush into this particular decision. Everybody's getting, using the rate of five and a quarter right now, so there, there would only be a change if we come, if we use a rate other than five and a quarter.
It seems what we need.
But it takes six months to put it in place.
A good justification to make the change, if this is now the, the rate that's established, and people understand that it is, I think we need to really deliberate, think about whether or not to change it, if we want a singular rate, and it's competitive with other similar.
Rebecca?
Institutions.
What you said earlier, there's, there's, it would be nice to do it July 1st or January 1st, but it could be any other month out of the year, technically. Is that correct?
It can be, yes.
I, I, you know, I, I, I don't know the best mechanism to do it, kind of goes through earlier discussion about adding a work groups and ad hocks and all that wonderful stuff, but, you know, whatever, whatever way, whatever way we have a conversation with, with K board in a legal way, to work out a compromise is what we need to feel, if it's right.
Well, Mr. Owens and Mr. Chilton have been having those conversations, and since neither one of them are trustees, they don't have the meeting restrictions that the trustees do. I think Bill's suggestion that if we gave Mr. Owens a sense of what we might recommend as a single rate, would be something that he could use in conversations with Mr. Chilton, that Mr. Chilton could take to the K board. Does that seem like a workable approach? The only thing that, that I'm not sure we could accomplish in there is maybe shopping what the members' alternatives are. If they don't like the rate that they can get with us for converting to annuity, what can they get in the marketplace? And I think Mr. Cheatham has indicated that, that's kind of fluid, that, you know, that changes on a, on a regular basis.
Right, I think, yeah, other than the question, that is, what is a comparable rate in the market?
My concern has been that we, we have two different asset allocations. One that tries to target to six and a half, and one that tries to target to five and a quarter. And while I understand that administratively, it's a lot simpler to have one rate for everybody, I'm a little concerned that our CERS members are going to have lower Tier 3 balances to convert to annuity because they have lower salaries. And so we're asking them to take a lower annuity because KRS has a investment target of five and a quarter instead of the six and a half that we're using. So I, I just feel like we're investing to try to get to six and a half or better, but we're not going to let our members have the benefit of that, those investment earnings. I'm sorry, Mr. Eager, and hit your mute button.
Yeah, I'm, I have, thank you. John Chilton has indicated to me that he is going to suggest that they get to a common number, and I, I think he's aware that you're at 5875.
So I think what we could do at this point is have a motion to give Mr. Owens some direction on conversations with Mr. Chilton.
What if we had a motion to approve the 5875 and then table it pending K's deliberations?
That's an option.
And Ed would have a stronger position in this discussions. We have a real definitive number that we're looking at. And Ed would have a stronger position in this discussions. We have a real definitive number that we're looking at as far as C is concerned.
I, I would say that that might not be the number that we really want to have. And I would vote against it. Cause I think that's way too generous, given that we may have a goal of six point five, but under, we have a recession, we might not meet that goal. And so if we're, don't have, I think five and a quarter is probably the, the market rate now for something like this. And nobody's forcing them to take this annuity. It's up to them.
No, but there, there's a second part of that. If you're not competitive with market, Dr. Milkmann, then you're going to have an exodus of assets.
But we are competitive with market at five point two five.
Well, I'm, I'm sitting here looking at a rate from a company for an age sixty. It's currently at six point four.
But does, do they have all the eight, the age rate that you're looking at?
I, I'm looking at an age sixty, six point four percent for life.
And what's our average age?
Age sixty five, seven point one.
And, okay. Lyle, does that have, uh, uh, expenses and other factors that come out after that six and a quarter?
That, 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 that number, that number is what the, the recipient gets net. But, you know, it's just like, you know, that, that annuity works just exactly like ours. You're making, you're making a contract saying to, you know, the insurance company, here's, here, in this case, example, based on what Dan's put together, here's my two hundred thousand dollars. You agree to give me this check for the rest of my life. For that of my, me and my beneficiary. Same thing there. So you might as well say it's a hundred percent yes.
Just saying that I don't think we're in any position to make a recommendation today.
Thoughts from other trustees?
I think the five eight seven is the, is the best spot. So I think that we'll be able, able to get to an agreement on that number.
Well, how, how about a a proposal to, to, uh, have our CEO discuss this issue and see what kind of number that, uh, he, he then would report back to us.
His board meets next Tuesday.
Uh, if I might, Madam Chair, uh, Bill, I like, uh, the idea of, of Dr. Hackbart of the board voting a number and contingent upon agreement from the K board because it, it strengthens, I believe, the, the leverage I would have in speaking with John about a, that particular number.
If it's appropriate, I'll move that we set at five eight seven five. Second.
Thanks, Mr. Falkerson.
Betty, I couldn't hear the motion. Would you repeat that, please?
Sure, the motion was that we recommend five point eight seven five as a single rate, uh, to the K board. And that, that was the rate that was recommended by the actuarial committee.
Yeah.
From their meeting last week.
I seconded that. That, that was my thought also.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Falkerson, um, seconded that motion. So we have that motion on the table. And then Dr. Hackbert had also suggested that we table a vote on this motion. Until Mr. Owens had had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Chilton, and Mr. Chilton had had an opportunity to talk with the K board. Do we still want to take that approach?
I was saying, we, we need to move this ball down the road a little bit, and it's a recommendation. And they either agree to it or they don't. But I don't want, everybody's kind of looking at the other, C looking at K, K's looking at C. We need to, we need to have some momentum here. I don't know why, what'd be wrong with moving ahead with the recommendation.
Dr. Hackberg, what, what if we had a motion to, uh, adopt the five eight seven five pending an agreement from the K board?
I think that's what the motion originally.
Table it is, until we get, uh, a, a, ineffective positive response to kit from K. But, but Ed would have then a specific number to discuss with K.
I'm sorry, Dr. Hackberg, could you repeat that, please? I missed the first part of it.
I move that we table this motion. Who said it, five point eight?
Which motion? There's two on the floor.
The one on the floor was to adopt the five eight seven five. Dr. Hackberg made that motion, and then, uh, um, Mr. Falkerson and Mr. Foster, uh, seconded that motion. And now, Mr. Dr. Hackbart is suggesting that we table his motion.
Wouldn't it be stronger for Ed to be able to go to John Chilton and say, we've agreed to five eight seven five?
I think the only problem with that is that in effect, we're saying that's where we are and, and they're have, have, we're, we're, we're trying to get their input as well, I think.
Point of order. We are having a discussion without a second.
And we can't discuss the motion to table.
But you do not have a second.
Second.
A call for the question.
Hang on just a second. Mr. Falkerson has seconded the motion to table. That means we cannot discuss the motion at all, since it is a motion to table. All those in favor of tabling the motion.
You don't have a second. Do you, for a table?
Mr. Falkerson seconded the motion to table.
Okay.
So all those in favor of tabling the motion, uh, to recommend five eight seven five to the K board. Please say, uh, Sherry, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Pendergrass.
Uh, I'll, I'll vote in favor of tabling.
Dr. Carver?
No.
Mr. Cheatham?
No.
Mr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Falkerson?
Yes.
Dr. Hackbart?
Yes.
Dr. Milkman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Meara?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
You have five yeses.
Five yeses to table the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Waste your two hours.
Okay. Ed, do you understand what you have to take to Mr. Chilton?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to understand too, what he has to take to him, because I'm a little confused right now.
All right, Mr. Owens, if, if you would, uh, please, uh, kind of summarize what you plan to discuss with Mr. Chilton.
That, that the board is very focused and centered around five point eight seven five as a single rate for the system. Uh, it, understanding that is a compromise rate for both C and it would be a compromise rate for K. If K were willing to get to five point eight seven five as a single rate. We would then be able to move forward as a system with a single rate of five point eight seven five. If K is not able to get to or want to get to five point eight seven five. Then conversations, discussions around two separate rates or another blended rate would need then to occur.
Does that make sense to the trustees? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Owens?
Saying that's where we are, yeah.
I, I think the intent of tabling was that we're not taking a final vote on it. We're still open for negotiation. That's where we were leaning, was five eight seven five.
What is the K, what's the other board suggesting?
They haven't suggested one yet.
Okay, so I can't, I'd like to hear what they suggest, because my guess is we're being too generous.
Uh, they're meeting, um, Sherry, their meeting is next week on the fourteenth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if you want to hear firsthand what
No, I'm not going to wait. I'll wait till they, I mean, I don't want to intrude on their discussion.
Well, you can watch it on Facebook, is what I'm saying.
I know, that's true, but I'd rather wait and see what they come up with independently.
So Mr. Owens will report back to us in December. Um, I think that covers everything that we had on the agenda. If I could go back to the bylaws for just, uh, a short minute. I'd like to ask Mr. Foster and Mr. Cheatham to work together on that legislative language. If they could, uh, get with Mr. Bronco and Mr. Bowman, um, to, um, uh, study that issue and come up with some alternative language for our bylaws. Could I ask you two gentlemen to work on that with our legal team? Okay. And, uh, Mr. Foster is currently, uh, heading up our, uh, working group. Legislative working group is the reason I'm asking him to weigh in. And he's another one of our legal eagles. All right, um, at this point, I would like to request a motion to go into closed session for litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much, Dr. Carver. All those in favor of going to closed session for litigation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, a motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose. In such motion having carried by a majority vote in open public session. The board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to K R S sixty one dot eight one zero one C. Because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege.